Okay, good evening. Today is October 27th. This is the City of Muskego zoning board of appeals meeting. And it is 6:01, sorry for the one minute delay. Okay, let's stand up and do the pledge of allegiance, please, if you're capable. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one inch under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, statement of public notice, Erin.
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting laws on Friday, October 21st.
Thank you. We will move the approval of the minutes for the last meeting to the end of the meeting. We will not have a closed session. We've never had a closed session in all the decades that I've been on the board, so I don't think we're going to start tonight. New business, appeal number 01-2022. Petitioner James and Nancy.
Muller.
Muller, okay, thank you. It was one or the other. Property, West 179 South 6700, Muskego Drive, tax key number 2174.863, requesting under the direction of section 400-18 of the municipal code, zoning, zoning board of appeals. Petitioner seeks the following variance, chapter 400-23A, building location. Location restricted, no building shall hereafter erected, structurally altered, or relocated on a lot, except in conformity with the following locational regulations as hereafter specified for the district in which it is located. A front slash right-of-way setback of 40 feet is required from the eastern side lot line along Ranch Drive. The petitioner seeks a setback of 16.6 feet from the east side lot slash right-of-way line for the allowance of a garage addition, and is therefore requesting a 23.4-foot variance from the required front slash right-of-way setback along Ranch Drive. Who is here that would like to testify on behalf of the Mullers? If you are, please stand up.
And also anyone else that would want to make a public comment, correct?
Oh, yes, anybody who wants to make a public comment? And, I forgot one thing, it's been 14 months since we last met, so a little rusty. We need a roll call. Erin.
Chairman Blumenfield.
Here.
Dr. Kishan is absent. Mr. Hurrenda.
Here.
Mr. Boshert is absent. Mr. Tyslinski, Tyschelski, Mr. Schnecker.
Here.
Mr. Patterson.
Here.
Father Tripotowski.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, so if anybody wants to speak on behalf, or against, or just to say hi to us on the record, please stand, raise your right hand. Dennis, stand, raise your right hand. Repeat after him.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony which you shall give in appeal 01-2022 shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, and now I would like to have each of you give your name, state your name and your address for the record. Mr. Muller?
James Muller, Muskego Drive, West 179 South 6700, Muskego Drive.
Thank you.
5351.
Thank you.
Nancy Muller, West 179 South 6700.
Thank you. Sir?
David Bransky, W191 S7192, Looming Drive, that's Muskego, Wisconsin, 5315.
Thank you.
June Doyne, West 179 South 6700, Muskego Drive. Okay. Adam, there are a couple people that were out in the hallway, is the door open?
They maybe want to do some election stuff, which they can't do now anyway.
Okay, fine, okay. But people have access to the room, right?
Yeah, the door's open.
Great, okay. Thank you very much, you can be seated. Okay, Mr. Muller, would you, or whoever you would like, please come to the podium, state your name, and let us know why you are here and what your hardship is for this appeal.
Okay. The microphone has a switch on the top, I think, or on the side, you might have to switch it on. I think it's facing me, I think I can see it. Oh, you have to go.
Tap it real quick.
If you want to just tap on it, maybe it's already on. Nope, you're good.
Hello?
Hello? Perfect, thank you, all right.
My name is James Muller, which you all know, live on Muskego Drive. I suppose the best way to start this is start from the beginning, so you guys totally understand what happened on my property. I think that'd probably be the easiest way to go about this. So everybody gets to feel, get familiarized with where I live, been there 42 years, and I'd like to explain my story, so you guys get a little feeling why this all took place and how it all happened. Is that fair?
Absolutely.
Okay. So back in the day, when I bought that house in 1980, raised three kids, so you know, you've got to have a place to put all the stuff, living on the lake, you know, all the toys and whatnot and all this stuff. So Brian Misko was the alderman at that time, and he was flying pigeons in his backyard, racing pigeons, and he had a couple coops in his backyard, and me and him were buddies. And he says, "Well, one of these days you've got to get a coop," and I said, "Well, I don't know, I don't know, I'll figure it out someday, maybe I'm working too much and all that stuff. I've got to, you know, worry about everything else." So one day he goes, "Well, you've got to do something." So I said, "All right." So I got a truck box from the farm. We had our farm on National Avenue in Vernon, and I put it alongside the garage. So I used half for storage for all the stuff, bikes and garden stuff, and then I had a little pigeon coop in there, flying the pigeons. So he said to me, "You don't have to have no permit, it's just an outside storage. I've already okayed that with the city, there should be no problem whatsoever, everybody can have an outside storage on their property." And that's what he told me when he was the alderman. So I said, "Okay." So that's what I did. So I didn't think there was anything wrong, didn't, I don't think I did anything wrong, because he said it was okay at that time. And that was way back 35 years ago. The truck box has been there ever since. And I maintained it, I painted it, I made it look really nice, kind of, you know, was there and it was doing its job. Put all my stuff in there and didn't have to worry about it, you know, didn't get rained on and no lawnmower and stuff like that, you know? So about 10 years ago, I said, "One of these days I'm going to get rid of that truck box, and I'm going to build me something off the garage." Well, 10 years went by, busy, too much at work, I never had no time to do it. So one day I says, "I'm going to get that truck box out of here, and I'm going to build something off the side of that garage." And I was just replacing what I had, and I didn't think I was doing anything wrong. So that's what I did. Couple years ago, I took the truck box out of there, and I built that little shed off the side of the garage to put my stuff in there. So that's the story. And I didn't think I did anything wrong, and I told Adam that right from the get-go. I says, "I took my old way and just put in something new, and I didn't think I did anything wrong." And that's the honest God's truth.
Mr. Muller, can you please expand on why you believe there's a hardship, which is why you're here?
Well, I didn't really realize all this was going to happen, so when I got the letter in the mail, I was almost devastated. I'm like, "Oh, boy." So then I came right to here, to the city, and asked for a permit to try to make this thing, you know, legit, like, "Hey, okay, if I get the permit, I should be okay." Well, then they started with the variance stuff, you know, this, that, you know, the zoning and all that stuff. Where I live on Muskego Drive, I'm boxed in there. I'm on Muskego Drive, Earl Drive, and Ranch Drive. There's nowhere, anywhere I can go. I'm pretty much secluded right in that three, three streets, so I feel that that's one of my hardships, is that I'm boxed in there, and where the lean-to is off the side of the garage, on that side, it fits the property perfect. And everybody that looks at it, anybody that sees it, they say it looks like a million So that's why it's there.
So you're saying that your hardship is the size of your lot?
Well, I'm, yeah, I'm saying that would probably be the best way to go about it, I guess.
Is there anything else that you want to add that would be construed as a hardship in your estimation?
No.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Muller?
Just tapped on the button. Does the, I know you had the concrete, excuse me, the metal container there.
Yeah.
Was that physically attached to the building?
Was that?
Was it physically attached to the garage?
No, it was just beside it.
There was no foundations on it?
No, I just had it on concrete blocks.
And your lean-to that you have there now, or the addition that you have on there now, there's not a concrete slab or any foundations?
Yeah, I have a slab there now, yeah.
Okay. That's all I had. Thanks.
Anybody else for Mr. Muller? Okay. Does anybody else wish to speak on Mr. Muller's behalf? Sir, please come forward.
David.
And state your name, please.
David Bransky. It's actually pretty intimidating, you guys all just staring at me.
We are not intimidating, trust me.
Yeah. Pretty quiet. Yeah, so I got, so I'm a, you know, a neighbor-ish friend, I live on the little Muskego Lake, 50 feet of frontage between each property, and I understand quite a bit of rules and regulations, we're trying to make sure that we be conforming to each property, especially when you live on a lake. I built my house 12 years ago, felt, you know, the rules. I even had, at that time, there was a permit dispute where my neighbor thought that my lot line compared to his lot line wasn't the same, and it was pretty overwhelming because they had felt that maybe my house was six or seven inches off of the lot line incorrectly. And I had nothing to do with that, they had to build that spot, that was where the, if you had one surveyor against the other surveyor, that's where they felt, this surveyor felt that he moved the stakes and felt this is the right location compared to the other one. At the end, it all got dropped because I didn't know what was going to be nonconforming, and I worried about that. I thought, "I have this house that's worth a great value and may be nonconforming." And that's a pretty lousy feeling. I thought in Jim's particular case, after he had showed me this and what he had did, you know, he had added this, like he had said, this little slight lean-to on the side of it, but he didn't like open up from the inside of the garage, he just did something that he thought would be an addition to his side to store some things. If you look at his hardship or his lot size, it's a pie-shaped area where it's technically his house is nonconforming now and even in the future for someone wanting to buy. He can't really build on other than what Adam had stated in the back half, which is along that, I guess that would be to the north. If you do that, it really isn't what I would consider practical from a use standpoint, because in Jim's particular case, you only have a certain area of what you have outdoor space that you want to use for a patio, you would lose somewhat of all of that. It's a different grade coming down. The position that he had did it on, really, it's the farthest to the east, it's out of sight, it's a small little addition to the garage. You have to get on it from the other side, and it really does protect valuables that a lot of people like myself, even, you know, I live, is that I want things put away, I want it there, I want it stored, and he doesn't have it, it's a nonconforming garage now. And I think, when I look at that from a hardship standpoint, when you go to sell something in the future, many times people will look at that and say, "Well, I'm buying a nonconforming home, I'm buying a nonconforming garage." And then, is that value really worth it, or not? And then, what can I do to that? And I said, even in my case, I was very fortunate that no one did anything, but listen, if I have a nonconforming house on a, on a lake, that to me would be very, very, you know, cautious or nervous on a 50-foot lot. So when I got to know Jim really well, I mean, I read what Adam wrote, I seen everything there, and I thought it was the right thing to come see you guys and explain the story. I'm ready for questions.
Any questions? Okay, nope.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who would like, please come forward and state your name?
June Doyne, I live west.
We've got your address, we just needed your name.
June Doyne, I can see directly to the Muller's property from my driveway. We are a new build, this is our sixth year in Muskego, and we built on an empty lot, so we have had trials and tribulations of our own with property lines and conforming. We were fortunate to build up. Jimmy's property, James's property, Nancy's property is on a corner, and it's a pristine property, they keep it very tidy, and yet they are still generous with it. They are fenced in, and you cannot see this shed, you cannot see anything due to the placement of their home, their garage, and their fencing. Everything on Ranch Drive, when you drive from the north out of Park Arthur onto Ranch, before you turn on Earl and then come onto Muskego Drive, you do not see, it doesn't impede the grass or the easement, it doesn't impede anybody else's property, and it would be a big hardship for James to have to move it, or remove it, or put it somewhere else on his property. Anybody that parks along his grass, he's very generous with not putting up signs or tagging it off, or coning it off, people park on his grass to park for the water bugs. People park on his gravel, on his property, to go to the water bugs. Same with my neighbor Dick Ristau. I think it would be a hardship asking him to change it, remove it, redo it, and it would be unfortunate if he didn't get the variance. I think that their property is a staple. I don't know what other word to use, in our neighborhood, they have been there for so many years, they were very welcoming to us, our small children, our animals, they're good neighbors, and I think it would be a hardship, and it would be, I would be really hurt if they had to go through the hardship of having to redo it, or take down their fencing to take it out, to put it somewhere else. It's not seen by anybody, it's not an eyesore to anybody, and I just feel that the variance should be granted. And that's just my opinion, as being a neighbor that can see their whole property and enjoy their whole property and them.
Thank you. Any questions for this witness? Thank you very much. Is anybody else here that would like to speak on the Muller's behalf?
Could I say something?
Did you?
Can I add at the beginning? Is it too late?
Technically, yes, it is too late.
It's her call. Just have to swear her in, then.
Stand up, swear her in.
I swear it in.
It's okay.
That's okay. I don't want to be talking in front of people, so this is hard.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony which you shall give in appeal 01-2022 shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Sure, Nancy Schmidt, West 179 South 6650 Ranch Drive. I just want to say that I've been on Ranch Drive for 67 years, and the Mullers, I mean, they have taken wonderful care of their property, it's always appealing, they're, they're just amazing neighbors, and they, you know, it's, he made a mistake, he was not aware that he was doing something wrong. We all make mistakes in life, and, you know, God forgives us for those, and I think somebody should just, and I know it's a mistake, I know there's rules, I know there's regulations, but he did, he was not aware that he was making the mistake. So I really hope that you guys give him this variance. I just think they deserve it, they take good care of that property, and it'd be a shame if you made him take that thing down. So, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Any questions for Ms. Schmidt? No? Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else? Mrs. Muller?
So I understand.
This is Mrs. Muller speaking.
Yes.
Just for the record.
You know, so I do understand that there is, you know, the 40-foot rule, but my, with the way our property sits, and the way, you know, it, for us to put that, that storage shed somewhere else on our property would make our yard look obsolete. That is the most perfect spot that we could put that, where it's out of the way, doesn't block any neighbor's views, it matches the house, it matches the garage, and we can keep our stuff, you know, stored, so it doesn't get stolen, or people pick up stuff, whatever. But to me, that's just the most place that that should go. And there's never going to be, the road widened, there's never going to be houses built, everything's established where we live, so I, I mean, at the end of it, really, what is it going to hurt for that to stay there? That's my question. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Muller? Mrs. Muller, I have one question for you. Do you recall when the concrete slab was placed on the property for the outdoor furniture?
Oh, I don't even know, 30 years ago?
Purbius.
How many years ago? 30 years ago?
30 years ago, okay. And do you remember if you got a permit for that?
To be honest, I don't remember.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, last chance, has everybody on the, for the Mullers come forward? Okay, then we will now hear from Adam Trebatowski, from the city's perspective on this issue.
Thank you. So I'm not going to reiterate things that obviously everyone's talked about, there's no point in wasting everyone's time, you know, it was nice that they kind of clarified exactly some of the history, you know, in our write-up, we did our best estimates on things we knew based upon aerial photography and street view photos and things such as that. So, yeah, this came up as a complaint from elected official, as you may be aware, and if you aren't aware, all zoning violation complaints that the city follows up on have to be based on a complaint to an alderperson. We don't drive around looking for issues. So in this case, someone made a complaint to the alderperson, they brought it to our attention, we then had to investigate and follow through with it till there's some kind of resolution. So, yeah, we definitely went out to the property originally, I even forget when the first letter went, it was a little bit ago, sent a couple different letters, the Mullers did talk to us at a few different times, and Mr. Muller was, was exactly right, you know, as soon as we looked at what was going on, I mean, as soon as we saw it, we knew it wasn't compliant. All zoning districts in the city, with the exception of an RL-zoned lot, which means lake-fronting directly, not near a lake, but fronting the lake, and even there are a few exceptions, not all lake lots have that zoning, all typical lots in the city have a 40-foot setback. Now, obviously, we have a lot of older homes, especially around the lake, but older homes in the city that may be closer, that may have been built before our current codes were in play, you know, obviously, those are grandfathered in, just like their existing garage, I'm not sure when it was built, that's not the question here today. But, you know, like today, if that garage were to be, want to be built, it wouldn't be allowed to be built in that spot today, just as an example. So, you know, we offered the Mullers the options that we saw, which, you know, the idea of going for variance is one of them, all flat-out removing it is another option, or I guess a third would be, you know, somehow trying to relocate it. We always try to work with applicants when we can, there's not always a clear answer, there's not always a good solution, and sometimes there are, you know, hence why they're here today, you know, there wasn't a, you know, a solution that they liked, hence that they're requesting this variance today, which is understandable. I think we usually try to do a pretty good job about working with, on applicants, and I think seeing that we haven't met in, you know, almost a year and a half is a good tale to that, when the board used to meet 10 times a month, or have 10 requests a month. So we try to work with the applicants where we can. So the issue here is, even though the existing garage is too close to Earl Drive, their addition is no closer to Earl, it's actually stepped back a little bit to Earl Drive, so there's no issue with the distance from Earl Drive, which would be on the south or the right side of the survey. The only issue is really the setback from Ranch. You'll see on the survey that right now that addition is about 16.6 feet off of the legal lot line, which is also known as a right-of-way line along Ranch Drive. That's the number that's supposed to be 40. So even the existing garage was noncompliant, so even if they would have come to us ahead of time, we would have advised them that they couldn't have gone to that eastern direction. You know, what we would have offered them at that time, and we've offered them subsequently, was either an addition off the north side, which I'd probably call like the backside of the garage, or a possible addition off the west or left side of the garage. I understand the owners may or may not like that idea, but our job is to provide options, because that's one of the tests that the state statutes and the case law really talks about, is other options. You know, the case law talks about, you know, a variance being granted only when there aren't other options. You know, I think the state statute and the case law talks about leaving the property with no usable use, which, that's kind of a tough test, obviously. But with that being the case, there are opportunities to possibly go north or go west. It may not be deal, it doesn't involve construction, yes it does, but hence the reason that we try to encourage permits in the first place, so they don't have to worry about moving, relocating, things like that, and we can do it right, you know, from the first, first step. So there's no other zoning setback issues here, strictly that, that eastern Ranch Drive offset. The applicant stated their reasons, so I'm not going to rehash any of that. Some of the things that we provide applicants and that we are trained in through different legal resources are things relating to zoning case law and state law. So there's some handouts we have in our office that we pass out to applicants, and there's a few things that we're responsible for kind of going over and saying, "Do they meet these or do they not?" And these are some examples of things that have been, you know, proven by courts. One of them states that a variance cannot be self-imposed, or it cannot be related to a circumstance of the applicant. So there's actually some case law that specifically cites the desire for a larger garage is not reason to grant a variance. So if someone just says, "I have more storage," versus someone else, that alone has been tried by a court to say that's not, that alone isn't a hardship. Same thing self-imposed, someone saying, you know, "I don't like the look of A, so I want to do B," or "I don't like the cost of A, so I want to do B," those are all self-imposed things that the case law says we aren't supposed to be looking at. And one thing I think is important to note is that the code does give accessory structure size limits, and everyone is allowed accessory buildings, so a detached garage is an accessory building in addition to it's part of that accessory building. There's nothing that says a certain amount is allowed by right. There are size limits, if you can fit it within the zoning, but that doesn't mean, and we have some houses that have no garages and go for a variance to get a small one-car, you know, that's been something that this board has heard before. One thing that is also worth noting from the case law is lack of objection from neighbors isn't a sole ground sort of granting variance, it's obviously helpful, and I did provide the Mullers the suggestion of talking to neighbors, and so you will see in the packet there was a list of neighbors that didn't have issues with this. You know, there's necessarily, that alone shouldn't be a reason for granting it, I think it's a good practice though to show that there aren't aggrieved neighbors, because if there were aggrieved neighbors, that has a lot of weight that we should be looking at too, but we haven't heard any of that today. Another thing the case law talks about would be only granting the least or most minimal variance possible, so if they are going to even get a variance, it should be the least possible. And I think since there are options that don't have to have a variance, that kind of takes that whole thing right out of the equation, you know, with going on the north or the west sides. Zoning case law also talks about financial hardship, and I know the Mullers really haven't mentioned this, but it's something we try to cover in all variances, it's real standard in our write-up, is that, you know, if there would ever be a question or a comment about, "Hey, we, you know, we can't move it because it costs too much," or whatever, you know, anything relating to financial loss or gain, that has been tested by the courts to say that that is unique to an owner, and whether someone has a lot of money or not, that shouldn't figure into the decision with a variance. Then also for the zoning board handbook, second edition, 2006, which is something that's put together by one of the UW extensions to help write zoning board of appeals throughout the whole state of Wisconsin, there's kind of what they call the three-step test, that they say board should be looking at. First item is a necessary hardship. And so that states that when a necessary hardship exists, when compliance would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose, basically, and then parentheses, leaving the property owner without any use that would be permitted on the property, or render conformity with such restrictions unnecessarily burdensome. So that's one thing that, if someone believes it's unnecessarily burdensome, the question would be, well, there's options to move it. And typically, that's something that isn't a reason, when there are options, to grant a variance based on. Unique property limitations, that's another test, that's part of the three-step test that the board should look at, basically saying that if there are some physical limitations on the property, those are things that can be possibly considered, but some things like minor grade changes, which is the case out here, aren't an issue, if you look at the existing addition, it's not even at the same exact plane as the garage, so elevation shouldn't be an issue, especially if there aren't indoor connections. Also, there was some mention in the original submittal relating to some electrical issues, which it appears, I believe, those are overhead lines, and overhead lines can have structures under them. I personally have a garage under a power line, it's doable, it's allowable, plus, it's not that difficult to have lines removed if they're, especially if they're above ground. It's As far as no harm to the public interest, that's the third test. We would agree that there isn't public harm here, you know, it's not harming anyone. Obviously, someone was aggrieved enough by it to report it, but there isn't harm, so that, that wouldn't apply in this scenario then. So it's like I mentioned, as far as options go, there are the options to go to the two other possible directions, or even a third option of maybe doing the same-sized building detached somewhere else in the yard. I will agree with some of the people that spoke when they were mentioning that there isn't a lot of space, you know, the building pad does get tight, for sure, there is no doubt about that, three-sided roads have an impact on that, but that doesn't mean that there's no space. There is space still that that same-sized structure could be built as a freestanding building if an applicant possibly wanted. One thing that the board should just definitely think about, and you know, be careful when reviewing any requests, when we're dealing with structures built without a permit, the board should be reviewing these no differently, whether it exists today or if they were asking for it ahead of time. So there, no, there isn't any quote-unquote benefit to having it built already. So that's one thing the board just needs to be cautious on, in making sure that there has to be some kind of, you know, hardship, physical or something, to justify granting a variance. One thing we wanna be careful of as a board is to make sure we're not setting any kind of precedent that basically says, hey, if we don't build without a permit and it looks good, we're gonna leave it, because this isn't a test of aesthetics. The zoning code isn't based on aesthetics, aesthetics are subjective, so unfortunately, we shouldn't be looking at, does it look good, does it not? I think everyone here agrees it probably looks fine, you know, it looks nice, but that's not the test the board requires or allows us to use when we're looking at these cases. Basically, then kinda to summarize, based on the outcome of whatever the board would deliberate and decide here, if the variance is not granted, the addition then would ultimately have to be removed within a reasonable timeframe that the board should assign as part of their decision tonight. If the variance is granted, as requested, a building permit would be the next step. So an applicant would need to submit for a building permit, that would include actual building plans and a survey, the survey we already have, things like that would be submitted just like any other building permit would be submitted. So once again, just because it's already built doesn't exempt it from building codes or building permits. So they would apply for a building permit. The building permit policy is any permits done after the fact are triple-fee, so there would be an inherent penalty there, whatever the permit fee is, is triple per the building permit application process. Once the permit would be reviewed, our inspectors will look at it, it goes through planning, engineering, and building inspection. If there's any questions, comments, concerns, those would actually have to be addressed in a timely manner. The variance then, one of the things that we would have to look at as part of the variance request on a planning zoning side is financial cost. And the reason being is anytime a building, whether it's a house, garage, shed, if anytime a building is non-conforming, which the garage here is, which it's a, can states, the term is legal non-conforming, nearly can be there, the current location is just non-conforming, they're only allowed to put half of whatever that building is worth into value of that building. So as part of the preparation of the supplement, we reached out to the assessor's office, the assessor's office provided us the documentation that shows the garage itself is assessed at $5,300. Garages in general aren't high-value, you know, the bulk of the values in the land and the homes. So basically, if they were to get a permit, they would have to provide material cost list of all materials involved in the addition, and it would have to show that those materials, the retail cost of those materials does not exceed $2,650, so that's 50% of that $3,500. So that's in the ordinance. That applies whether it's after the fact or not, that doesn't change anything, that's just one of the things we have to make sure is met. So if all that stuff would work out, if all the other zoning codes and things work out, then the permit would be issued, the inspectors would come out and do an inspection, since it's already done, that can happen right away, they would just do all the inspections at once. And then if there were any things that they believed were non-compliant, they'd have to be modified, you know, if they're gonna need to add a beam or change the size of something or whatever, or if it's all good, then the inspector would give them the okay, and they'd be given, you know, closeout of their permit, which would allow them to, you know, have the structure stay there indefinitely into the future, as long as it passes all the building code inspections. So definitely, if you guys have any questions, don't hesitate to ask. One thing I always note at the end of these is, you know, a note that kinda remember that the city must base the recommendation based on a valid hardship as defined by state law and zoning case law. Zoning case law states that the hardship must be unique to the property, cannot be self-created, cannot be based on conditions unique to the property, rather than conditions that are personal to the property owner or owners. Case law also states that a hardship should be something that would be unreasonably preventing the owner from using their property for the permitted purpose, or to render conformity with such restrictions unnecessarily burdensome. So any board of appeals needs to find a valid hardship in order to be able to approve any type of variance request. So based on that, staff didn't see a hardship as there are other options, so we are required to recommend it now. Now, the board can obviously discuss this, and they make, not staff, but the board makes whatever decision they feel appropriate.
Thank you, Adam. Questions for Adam?
I've got, oh, go ahead.
I've got a question.
I've got a question.
Where did you get the, the numbers for the garage value?
From the assessor's office. The city assessor has to keep all those values, so when you get your tax bill, if you look at the intricacies, there's an improved category and a land category. That improved category, if you have multiple buildings, has multiple parts to it, but on the tax bill, you just see the one total. The assessor in their detailed records has a value of each structure on each property.
But that's based on the tax value, I mean, if you were to go-
It's assessment.
Assessment, but if you were to go to buy the materials to build that garage today, you'd never-
Oh, no, probably not, no, the code-
Two walls for five-
Sure, no, the code requires us to use assessed value, though.
Okay.
So, you know, normally, people want low assessments, non-conforming buildings are the one time you want really high assessments. Like, when houses are non-conforming, you want your house worth as high as possible because it gives you more options for expansion.
The other question is, so if that were to be put on the north side of the house, is there a topography issue there? Is the land sloped in a way that it couldn't be put there?
If you look at the photos that are, Aaron, do you wanna maybe pan to some of the photos? The lot's not super hilly, I mean, is there some terrain change? Yeah, Aaron, do you wanna go to that one with the leveled, what's the difference? Here, even like at the back, if you scrub one, that bottom photo you see right there. So you can kinda see, you know, where the main garage is, you can kinda see how that lean-to kinda steps down a little bit, and then the yards are a little bit step further down. Do you wanna go to that one, Aaron, with the level? So you can see here is an example the applicant submitted, kinda showing the terrain difference, so I wouldn't word the lot as a hilly lot by any means. Is that back area a different height than the garage floor itself? Yes, I would definitely say it is. But on that note, I would also say that where the lean-to is, isn't the exact same height as the garage floor.
On the west side, you have a doorway there, so that impedes on putting that same-sized structure there, so.
You could still, I mean, that could still work, but yeah, there are times where modifications done to the exterior to facilitate this expansion. And there are some windows, obviously, in some of the sides, you'll see on there too.
And does that lean-to addition take up more space than the original box took up? Do you know?
It's hard to tell for sure, we're just going off an air photo, we didn't have dimensions, maybe Mr. Mueller could mention, say to them.
It's a little wider, but it's not as high. I lost space, basically.
It's definitely the same general area.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it.
Adam, just a couple of clarifications please for me. So they're asking to leave the actual structure out there, they're not planning on putting a new structure in there, is there?
Correct, yeah. The, what you see on the photo, that smaller garage door on the bottom right there, that's the part of it they wanna keep.
And with the complaint that happened, obviously, then drew the red flag, and that's kinda where we're at.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Have you spoken to their alderman at all, or has their alderman came and talked to them?
The alderman is who we originally got it from, is that, is this district?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mueller.
Oh, sorry.
Please, you can't.
Is that John Terrance, or?
I think that's, Aaron, is that Terrance District? I'm pretty sure it is. And when the original complaint started, it may have been a different alderperson also, because there was some redistricting in that area as part of the last election, so I'd have to double-check who it is today.
Okay. I did do a drive-by your property, it was kept, well, maintained, looks aesthetically pleasing, can't really see the lean-to from-
Kurt, questions for Adam right now?
Adam, I did take a ride-drive by it, you know, it is a clean, you can't really see it because of the fence that's there. Obviously, the good citizenship, the stewardship that you guys have presented, as being a good steward of the city, being kind to others. I'm just trying to, trying to, so it started with the coop slash additional storage. They're not required to have a permit for that, because there's no foundations.
That, that's, that is very incorrect. There is no roofed feature you can put on your lot that does not require a permit. Now, 30 years ago, I think you mentioned 30-some years ago it was put there, maybe not 30-some years ago.
But there would be-
Definitely in the last 20, if it has a roof, even if it's tiny, like a chicken coop, you need a permit for a chicken coop, I mean, anything. So, yeah, I mean, anything now with a roof of any size would need a permit of some type. There's a lot of flexible rules depending on size.
Right.
But even something detached would be problematic here, because that 40-foot setback applies whether it's attached or detached, that doesn't make a difference. Like, if someone wanted to build another freestanding structure right here, like the old one, or if he wanted to replace that, we wouldn't allow, like, what was there nowadays wouldn't have been allowed anyway, just because it's not the same material as the house and doesn't look like the house or the garage, but that's beside the point, you know, that was there.
No, no, no.
I'm not questioning that that other one wasn't grandfathered, I don't, I don't have any doubt that it was, maybe said you didn't need one, you know, that long ago, it probably didn't need one.
And how do we sit as far as with the green space being conformant with that, between the house, the garage?
The, they are okay. The surveyor did a good job in providing calculations on here, so they provided the lot area, they provided existing impervious, so they calculated how much is taken up already. I don't remember what the difference is, but that is one thing I ran in looking at the report, and as it sits today, if they don't have anything else, they are compliant with green space.
But the survey does not show the lean-to, right?
Yeah, no, the survey does, the, the upper eastern side is that lean-to that's in question today, that's, that's already there. Yeah, the cursor on the screen. That, that's the one that you see in the pictures, that's there now.
I would've thought the survey would've put a dotted line between-
Yeah, because they're all one today. I mean, as much as you might call it a lean-to or separate structure from the exterior, it looks and functions as one, you know. I, in my opinion, this is a garage addition, but what you call it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Has, so, I know 20 years ago, I think it was, we moved into a neighborhood, or moved into Mesquitego. We have an issue, and I'm just trying to figure out future solutions also, while I think this through. Because years ago, they used to have a city, you know, a house was sold, someone comes in there, I think it was $25 fee paid, is that what that purpose was?
Say that again, I'm sorry. The whole point is sale. Uh, no. That was one thing that the city made a big purpose, it wasn't meant to be we're trying to catch people in violation, because a lot of people thought that.
Right, right.
A lot of people thought it was, yeah. And, no, it was meant to be a safety inspection. So there was a specific list of items, only items, that the, these are building inspectors now, there was a list of certain items, like loose electrical wires and things like that, you know, if someone went for railing and it was shaky, you know, things that were life safety-type issues, those were things that would've been looked at during, during a point of sale. They weren't supposed to look around and say, like, does that need a permit, does that have a permit? Because then, that, like you said, then that's, now you're, you're literally searching, you're paying people to allow them to search your house for violations.
Right, which I was never for in the first place.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, that's been gone for a while now.
I'm just trying to figure, checks and balances forward, and non-conforming, zoning changes, people are stuck with what they have. I've also known people that have built stuff, and I said, "Well, you can build it without permit. Time you sell, or you get a complaint, then you gotta deal with it," you know? So that's the risk that people take sometimes.
Kurt, do you have any other questions for Adam?
Uh, yes, Adam, has anyone, have we ever waived the fee of the three times, if they decided to go that route?
I don't think that's a staff allowance, I think that would be something the council would have to decide. Not that I'm aware of, but it's not something I assess, it's through our building inspection department, which is technically separate from me. Typically, whenever there's questions of waiving fees, they usually, that's usually something the council or finance committee have to decide typically. That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you. Pat, any questions?
No.
Dennis? Okay. If there are no questions, then we will close the open session of this appeal. The board will now go into a discussion of the merits of the appeal. You're more than welcome to stick around and listen to our discussion if you don't want to. You can always leave and call Adam tomorrow morning and find out what the result was, but based on previous appeals, you were all probably going to stay. So we will now go into discussion of the motion, I need a motion for the appeal.
Motion approved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Who would like to start?
Uh, I guess I'll start. So Adam, you did provide them with some opportunities or different options for moving it, obviously, from your discussion to the north end of the building. So there is some avenues that they can do to follow another what the city of Mesquitego's looking for. That's all I really have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll go. This is, this is, as are many of the issues that are brought before us, a complicated measure and a complicated appeal because what we would like to do as individual citizens of the city of Mesquitego is to approve everything that comes before us, because we understand and appreciate the concern and the time and the effort that most appellants bring forward when they are looking for a variance from the board. What most people in the city of Mesquitego don't understand is that we are restricted from just saying, okay, you can do it because you're nice people, your neighbors like you, no one is going to complain about, hardly anybody is going to complain about what was done, but there are some who do complain. Because of the state statute and the code of the city of Mesquitego, we are restricted from just doing that or saying that. We have to follow state law, and state law says to us, as Adam said, there are limits to what we can do. We have to have justification based on state statute for what we can do. We have to have a hardship that's laid out and that is applicable to the case before us that says, this is going to be a hardship based on the, the topography of the lot, that it can't be built on, or that there are other extreme measures that make it a hardship. And so we rely on the appellants and the city to tell us what those hardships are. And if we can't find those, then we, as a board, if we approve something like this, we are then subject to legal action, as is the city of Mesquitego, that says you violated state statutes, and you didn't conform, and you didn't find a hardship, and you didn't do what is required of you as citizen members of this board, and as a city of Mesquitego, to say that there was a hardship. And so, and I think Adam laid that out, and I think you read it very carefully, it has to be based on unique conditions to the property, rather than conditions personal to the property owners. We didn't hear that tonight, I didn't hear that tonight. It says that the hardship should be something that would unreasonably prevent the owner from using their property for the permitted purpose, or would render conformity with such restrictions unnecessarily burdensome. We did, in my opinion, we did not hear that either. I think that there are options, much as the property owner does not want to comply or deal with those, that would give them the ability to have storage for their property, and that would be in conformity with both the code and state statutes. And based on that, I cannot, in good conscience, as a member of this board, and unfortunately, as much as I might like to as a person, support this appeal, so unless someone's heard or can indicate something differently that would sway my decision, I can't, I can't approve this. And I think that, and let me also say that all of, all of the people that are involved in this issue, I think, have worked diligently to try and resolve this. I know that the city staff has done an admirable job in trying to keep issues like this from coming to us. Lake properties are always an issue in the city of Mesquitego, because we have so many of them, and properties are so unique to the lake, but that wasn't the case in this instance. And so unfortunately, that's how I feel. Kurt? Kurt?
I have to, yes, I have to say that we are bound by them three rules that she's said. And I have to agree with her that if we move forward with this and approve this, we're setting ourselves up for other liabilities for the city. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, then, let's take a roll call on appeal number 01-2022.
Chairman Blumenfield.
No.
Mr. Herenda.
No.
Mr. Dziewalski.
No.
Mr. Schnicker.
No.
Mr. Patterson.
No.
Appeal 01-2022 is denied 5 to 0.
I would ask that you try and work this out somehow so that you can get the best use of your property with what you need. And there are options, and I think that they might not be what you want them to be, but they are options that you can pursue, so. Sorry, I, no, no, we're done with this.
I have a question. We have a set of time periods?
Oh, yes, we do.
I was going to mention that, yeah.
Okay, sorry. So do we need to amend the appeal?
No, I think it's just still be part of the record. I, I mean, in my two senses, obviously, we're coming upon a tough time of the year. I don't, my opinion is only as reasonable to have them try to do it before winter, but maybe winter could be a plan of figuring out, are they just going to remove it, or remove it and, like, move it, replace it, whatever you want to call it? And that would give them time to figure that out, get the permits or whatever it might be, based on what they choose to do.
What would you recommend as a time period?
I would suggest some kind of spring date, but I think that's, that's up to you guys.
Six months? Okay. So six months from tonight would be 10, 11, 12. One, two, three, March?
It could be April.
That's still-
April? Okay.
You want to go a little, just, I mean, things can still be cold and it was frozen.
I would suggest that we give them time, if they're going to do this themselves, to be able to have some decent weather, May or something.
Okay. Is May 1st agreeable? Okay, then-
It's, it's up to the board.
I, I would make a motion that we require the Mullers to have a plan that is acceptable to the city by May 1st.
Do you want them to have a plan, or do, or when do you want it done? I think if you're going to set a plan date, that's fine, that's okay, but we should also then have it completed by day.
Okay. I think May, well, if they have a plan by the end of the-
End of June or something?
The end of June? Okay. I'm thinking that maybe they'd have a plan before May 1st, maybe we can have it done by May 1st. So if we say March 1st that they have a plan going forward, that would then give them March, April, and give them until May 31st. Is that acceptable? Okay, so-
I would still like to see a few more months added on to there.
Okay.
I'd like to see the time being at least till, till the end of July or something like that.
We've, we've had issues with timelines before, and-
And we were asking them to remove a structure, and I just want to provide them, what, just trying to help them out. Our authority is, that's all I'm trying to do.
If, if we give them until March 1st to have an acceptable plan for what they're going to do going forward?
That's fine.
Okay, and then, let's say, July, July 31st?
Yes.
To have it, have it completed? Okay. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, so-
And so I can clarify, for, for plan, and just so we can give them good guidance, do you want them to, like, they apply for a permit then, they have the permit issued by then, what, just so there's no question?
I'd like to have a plan in place with any applicable permits pulled by March 1st.
So a permit issued by March 1st, okay.
And then if the decision is to take the structure down, they have until the end-
End of July.
End of July. And if they're going to rebuild, take down and rebuild, they have it-
It would be in the plan, right?
Right.
Yeah, they should have a plan either way. Even if the plan is removal, we should know that.
Yeah, so, so the plan with appropriate permits would be, as applicable, would be March 1st, and the completion of the plan, whatever that is, would be July 31st.
Well, if you got a permit, the, the permit has its own timeline.
Okay.
It, it, it does. The only thing I would caution is typically with, like, a violation scenario, it's normally 18 months, they're normally not going to give 18 months when they're trying to solve a violation. Let's say they were to remove it right away, if they had it removed by July 31st and want more time to do the rebuild, that's, I think, is fine. I think as long as the violation is solved by that date. Because, yeah, the permit gives them 18 months otherwise to finish the new project if they get a new permit for a project.
So if they decide to build something different or on the different side of the garage, that comes into play that March 1st. If they decide to take the structure down, that comes into play July 31st.
Yeah, I think we should, they just make us aware of the March 1st thing so we know what's going on, but yeah, I would agree with that.
Then the permit has its timeline.
So if they, if these, if they decide that they're going to move forward with removing it and replacing it in compliance, they would have until July 31st to take it down.
To have the structure completely removed.
Then they would apply for a permit to build-
That would happen in the March time period, right?
And then in March.
Yes, okay. And then March, that permit would, the construction permit would have a time certain on it.
Yeah, they're usually 18 months, as long as construction, I think it starts within the first 12 months. I think that's how it reads.
So March 1st to issue, to complete the plan and issue the permit for demolition because it needs to come down, correct?
That's what we're saying.
Okay. And so then we're going to give them from March 1st until July 31st to actually bring it down. Then going forward, they will have to decide, if they, if they have the permit, then they have whatever amount of time the permit allows them to build a new structure in compliance and with the code.
Because either way, it has to come down.
Right.
Whatever they're going to do.
Right, right.
So am I understanding correctly that the dates we're talking about are just for the removal of the current structure?
Yes.
Okay, because, you know, what they choose to do going forward, I don't think that-
It's not our concern.
Exactly, so I don't, I just wanted to clarify that.
So, March 1st, plan and permit to remove, compliance by July 31st. Okay, all right. So we need a motion for that?
One additional question, is there a permit needed for removal?
There normally is a raising permit, but in this case, I don't think it's necessary.
All right.
If there's not, I would say if there's probably electrical in it, then yes, because now you're dealing with a safety issue, homeowner's not allowed to do any of their own electrical. So if there's not electrical in it, I would say no. If there's electrical in it, probably should at least cover that from a safety standpoint.
So I'll make a motion that the Mullers have until March 1st to develop a plan in cooperation with the city as to how to proceed with the removal of the shed that is not in compliance, and they have until July 31st to remove it completely from the property. July 31st of 2023.
Is that including the concrete slab, too, or is that, could that stay?
The concrete slab could stay as long as it works with the open space.
Good, good.
Okay, call for a vote? On the, ah, need a second on the motion. Who'd like to second it?
I'll second.
Either one of them would gladly second it? Okay. For call?
Chairman Blumenfield.
Aye.
Mr. Herenda.
Aye.
Mr. Dziewalski. Mr. Schnicker.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Okay. All right, next item on the agenda is the minutes of the July 22nd, 2021 meeting, which was 14 months ago, and if-
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And good luck.
So we have a lot to ever talk to?
Oh, yeah, after we're done with the meeting, sure.
The meeting's not done?
Not done. Give us five minutes.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so the meeting, the minutes of July 22nd, 2021, which was appeal number 1-2021, the petitioner's, petitioner was Mitch Gola on behalf of the Gola Trust. Let's see, Henry, Dennis, and I were here.